Yeah, like. City Council work session order. Do I hear adoption of the agenda?
So move second.
And move in second, all those in favor, please say hi.
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 Um, so council discussion topics, um, can can you discussion regarding speed limits and traffic coming? Um, Tom, this is kind of your baby. So I was gonna have you lead if you feel like leading.
Oh, thanks, man. Yeah, you bet. I'll do my, I'll do my best. Are we also going to have an executive session? To as part of this mix today?
No, that's next meeting, that's next meeting.
Oh, it's the next meeting. My apologies. Okay, well, we'll get started here then. Um, that this is the COVID fog going there. So. Um, well, thanks, everybody. A couple of things, um. Let's just get started here. Um. A few updates. One is, uh, of course, just a refresher for the record that we pass the. Um, speed limit setting portion of the NACCO city limits last fall, um, as our speed limit setting methodology. And thank you colleagues in administration for moving that forward. And, um, interestingly enough, just today, uh, Mr. Perrigo received an email from our friends at NACTO. Uh, who have taken notice of our work on on speed limits and they've, um. We've received an invitation to participate in speaking a session on speed limits at their. Designing cities, uh, session in Denver this May, so, um. If, uh, maybe it'll be virtual for Mr. Perrigo or someone. Uh, but that's pretty interesting that they're taking notice of that and what they said about it. And I hope I'm not letting the cat out of the bag here, but it's. Uh, they said they think it would be really interesting for other cities to hear what it will mean for you as a city to have adopted. City limits as your approach. So that's, uh, pretty fascinating that we're getting validation from the people that actually. Wrote the, the, uh, the procedures and policies. Uh, I think that's a, a very positive step. And, and, uh, again, that'll be coming up in May. Um. And so a couple of things, um, the transpo group, uh, will be bringing a proposal to us in the future. Near, very near future for completion of the. Uh, local road safety plan. Uh, and. This is not limited to, but just brief highlights. Elements will include include, um, things like the NACCO city limits delineated safe speed study. Um, as well as an equity study that is required under the state RCWs. Uh, and to date, my understanding is that no city has. Yet, under the new statutes, completed an equity analysis or some of these various things that, um. Uh, that are required under the state statutes that were passed as of July last year. So. We'll have to figure out timing and see whether it makes sense for us to be. Uh, first in line or whether we, uh, don't want to be. Uh, trailblazers here and let somebody else do some of the heavy lifting and and go from there. But, uh, defer clearly to our friends at, at transpo group. Um, and a couple of things that. I think. Without getting into the weeds here, but. Um. Part of this also is going to need to be an examination of. Um. Drive around traffic. Um, I know councillor Bodie has mentioned it as well as councillor Lebo in the past that. Uh, we really still don't know, and the mayor and I have talked about this extensively, going back to when the tolling started. We don't understand really. What has happened? What the impacts have been? We know that the numbers went up. So I think that the number back in two thousand thirteen was like eleven percent, but we really don't know present day as well as. Uh, an examination of cut through traffic, um, based upon. For example, uh, a number of days ago, there was an incident on. Um. Uh, one oh four and maybe up at the top of Hill. I don't know exactly where it was. Chief might know, but the. Um, there was a lot of traffic that was cutting through local neighborhoods down, down low, uh, off of, um. Forty seventh, uh, thirty seventh, all those various neighborhoods there. So. Um, getting a better understanding of what's happening, particularly in light of the fact that the. The light rail stations are going to be coming online here in the coming years, and it would be. Really helpful for us to have a baseline to, to understand what, what's going on in terms of traffic counts. Um, kind of before and after the stations open. So, um. One of the things that, um, uh. Of course, it goes without saying that, that. The council will be looking at the, you know, a contract that the administration brings, brings forward here in the coming, coming weeks. Or whatever the timeframes that transpo and the administration is working on. Um, and I'm hoping that. We can make sure that we don't try to do too much too quickly, uh, in, in the issue. Uh, I mean, from the standpoint of making sure that we are able to. Move forward as some of the low hanging fruit as we've talked about as opposed to the things that are going to take a longer period of time. So, uh, on point, I just wanted to mention that. I think it's a, was a couple of us have had conversations in the past about various methodologies for. Moving forward with various things, not just generically, and it, it occurred to me that. We probably should be thinking about having a couple of small groups working, uh, or being prepared to work on, um. Um. These topics when the data comes through, so we can move forward as, as, uh, as appropriately, uh, as expeditiously. Expeditiously as this is appropriate. And what I thought about was, um. Uh, breaking it down from the standpoint of state routes and local roads. And. Colleagues, I, I wanted to get your impressions on this. The state routes would include. Speed limits and traffic camera considerations, and this again, after. Uh, our friends at the transpo group come back to us with the information that we need. And the reason for this is that if we bring everything to the full council each time that the material or the information is, is, is produced. It's going to take a lot longer for us to get through, and I think it'd be helpful to have sort of a working group to sort of distill it. And say, make recommendations to the coun- to the council. Um, and the administration as well, and. Um, so I thought about two, having two small working groups, one for state routes, including speed limits and traffic camera, can, camera considerations. And local roads, including arterials. Uh. Considering speed limits and traffic camera considerations. And I want to stop, pause there for feedback from, uh, you all and see what your, what your thoughts about breaking it down that way.
You see everybody, Tom?
I can't. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll let you call it councillor member Levo.
Okay, yeah, miss. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, uh, for this. I. I'm not sure that we have enough roads and state routes to for two groups. Particularly if they're looking at similar things such as speed limits and camera. And if they're just single group.
Okay. Mr. Furtoni.
So, thanks for your idea, Deputy Mayor, and, uh, one of the, uh, I questions I had about that was. Would these working groups deliverables be actual legislation or would it be recommendations for such?
I think initially it would be recommendations for such, and then after it's approved by the, you know, the policymakers. Uh, then go back and, and consider, uh, in conjunction with the, the, the administration and the legal team. What makes sense in terms of actual legislation? That's a great question. Thank you for that. Uh, Vice Chair Cusover.
Uh, thank you, Tom. Um. In thinking about this, you know, whether one group or two groups make sense, uh, I, I guess I don't. I'm not. Quite sure. How much? The state regulations differ between the two kinds of roads and whether. There's really sort of a different set of, of regulations and information that we need to look at for each types. You've done a little bit more work than we have on that. What's your thought on that, Tom?
Thank you very much, Phil, but that's a great question, and, and to councillor Lebo's point, the, the. Part of this is thinking about time horizon, because as we know. Things involving WashDOT, for example, in the state routes is going to take a considerably longer timeframe than, than the. Neighborhood streets. So remember, we had, um, three tiers, local roads, neighborhood streets, basically. Which are not. Uh. Under state statute, we don't have to get approval from. Excuse me, from WashDOT, for example, from the state on, on that level. As long as we have the speed limit setting methodology in place and we go through the exact, the steps that we need to, pardon me. And, um, so that's one level. And then the second level that falls in the middle, which is really a small sort of subset, but an important one is. Art arterials. We have two arterials. And, and that takes a longer period timeframe, uh, because of approval from the state based. You know, we have to go jump through more hoops and then the final. Longest horizon is the question of state routes. One oh four and five twenty-two require. Multiple more. Um. Keep using the expression hoops, but, um. Uh, if you're a basketball person, I guess that makes some sense, but the, the. There's, there are more stages and more steps and more gates, if you will, along the way that you have to go through to, to ensure that. My understanding, based upon my conversations with other communities and with, um, people that understand. This that are experts in the field, not by, by no stretch of the ma- the imagination of mine. Um, that the, the state routes, you know, the horizon is more like a year or two. Eighteen months, something of i- i- in that, in that nature. And I think it's important to recognize on the state level, particularly for five twenty-two. That. You know, speed limits are going to have an impact on what happens with, um. Basically with sound transit and, uh, my understanding is, is been, uh, the administration has done a great job of communicating with WashDOT and Sound Transit. About the question of if we are, we're, we are considering lowering speed limits, how is that going to impact your programs? So they're well informed. At the same time. There's also a sort of a. Um. I think there's an important step here. Multiple steps on the, uh, relative to five twenty-two that are unique because of. I think it makes more sense to, to ensure that the speed limit is. Is, is reduced in advance of the construction for a variety of reasons, uh, one to set standards. But two, to sort of, um. Begin educating the, the community and the broader region that this is what's taking place. Um. And again, I, I, my understanding is that there aren't radical design considerations based upon the speed limit going from forty to thirty-five, for example. I can't speak to the question of if the speed limit was boost. Further, which, um, I spoke with, uh. Um, I, on two occasions with, with Mayor Herbig of Kenmore about that, and they are certainly. Uh, amenable to considering a lower speed limit like thirty-five, particularly in the, in the, uh, throughout the corridor. And then the question is whether in the core areas. Of that are more the central sections of Lake Forest Park and, um. Uh. Kenmore, whether there'd be, uh, a, a reason to consider, you know, lowering it down from pedestrian safety, et cetera. So. Um. Hope that answers the question. Councillor Riddle. Excuse me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I think one subgroup, but with two distinct tasks with different deadlines would be sufficient. You know, front loading the, the neighborhood streets that are, are solely our responsibility and then the. Uh, city streets that are under the WashDOT review and then the actual WashDOT streets. Uh, but I think one group could probably handle that, and I think it would. Make the, the thinking between the different levels of streets more interconnected. Common thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, colleagues, other thoughts? I, I'm, I'm really flexible here. Part of it is. I would like to.
Some motion.
My right hand is off camera.
Oh, sorry, you're, you're. Councillor Goldman, sorry, Larry.
Um, I, I think we could have two groups. If we did, I think it might make more sense to organize them thematically rather than by type of road. And that kind of what I'm hearing, like, three main tasks are speed limits, what we need a full fledged speed study. Uh, traffic cameras and then other sort of engineering improvements such as like curve bulbs. Things like that. So one group could kind of handle the longer term. Speed limit studies for arterials and state routes, and then the other group could handle. Improvements you want to make in terms of building out curve bulbs or other ways to slow traffic down. But I also agree that that could also be handled by one group to say, you know, short term, let's get, you know. Look at small roads and then medium term, let's get the arterials and then long term, let's get highways. So I think either of those approaches could work.
Well, thank you. I, right now, in terms of the. The working group, I, I don't know what the nomenclature is. I, I've been kind of struggling with that because I don't want, I honestly, folks, I don't want this to be. Another layer of, you know. Things that, um. That's. An additional set of tasks that have to occur if we don't necessarily need that. At the same time, I, I believe that it's, it's probably, uh, an important thing for us to be ready. When the transpo group comes back to us with the various things that we're prepared. To, um, as policymakers to, to, to think about what, what makes sense, uh, in terms of. We're going to have to have a considerable amount of community engagement on this front. There's just no, there's no two ways about it, and I'm trying to. And I, and I need all of your, you know, insights. This is very helpful. About how we can break this down into something that's manageable, because it is a very, it's a very large group of things that we. Discuss last year. And on point, I, I think from the standpoint of the traffic calming and the. Sidewalks, et cetera, that is. That will be discreet, I believe, from the, 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 the charter that, that we're. You, you know, going to be handing potentially the transpo group in terms of. You know, a speed study. And the various components of that relative to speed limits. I'm not suggesting that it's not absolutely, uh, it. Uh, extric- extricably intertwined. That's really hard for me to say. But it, but it also is somewhat discreet from the standpoint that the speed limits and the results of the. Traffic studies and things like that are going to inform potentially what we need to do. Uh, in that regard, and so. Again, I, I, I really certainly would entertain, um. Thoughts about what's the best way to break this down, and what I'm trying to do is simplify the workload, and again, this is just my two cents worth. So that. One. We ensure that we're ready to continue to move forward. We don't place an over, uh, undue burden on, on staff. And, and, um. Also, then we do not spend a lot of time having to do things through full session. Uh, with council that we can have the group, a group, make a recommendation, council can talk about it. Uh, and if, if, you know, and, and I think, I think it's, it could be fairly simplified that way. But again, I'll defer to you all in terms of what you would, what, what your preference would be. This is just, uh, one approach. Councillor Riddle.
I can't tell if you can see me. I'm matching the wall.
I can. Yeah.
I, I think if we look at the working group as creating a, a product that is the. Purpose and the sort of policy framework that we would approach the data that transpo group provides. So it kind of gives us a running start when we see transpose information. That like, does this fit our purpose and our intent as, as council? And if it doesn't, then we got to work to do, but hopefully they kind of slot fairly similarly together. And then we can just move forward quickly. I don't think it's about council necessarily coming up with distinct. Decisions or product of like.
Mm-hmm.
This traffic calming should go here, but what's the criteria that this council wants to approach traffic calm? And kind of creating that framework. And then, like I said, when, when the data comes in, we can marry the framework and the data and create that final product, which would be the final policies that we. Dog.
That, that makes a lot of sense. Uh. Mr. Furtoni, guys, you're, yeah.
Um, finish your thought, though, Deputy Mayor.
I, I was just gonna, I, I was just gonna say, I think that makes a lot of sense. I, I, um. You know, again, these things are intertwined, and, and so I'm just trying to figure out how to break the task down. Um, you know, and, and make it so that we, again. It's, it doesn't seem so, um, I, I mean, keep in mind that, that we have to do an equity analysis under the state statute for placement of. Certain speed cameras. But. At the same time. The speed cameras, for example. Are going to be informed. The, the placement of those cameras or consideration of any additional ones is going to be informed by the traffic and speed studies. So it's sort of this, you know, um, iterative process going forward. So, Mr. Furt- Furtoni, that just.
And I, I think that comes to one, the point that I was going to raise, which was, um, I like the idea of working groups. It certainly basically helps focus what we're looking at, and then the rest of the council is sort of an independent body that kind of looks at the recommendations, the working group. I don't know whether it's one or two groups, because I don't know enough about this study. Is it kind of a? Uh, is there, I don't hate to say boilerplate language, but are these studies standard basically? Or can we ask for certain things? What's the scope and the information we're going to get back? Because if it's a ton of information, two groups might work, right? But if it's not a huge amount of information, it might be better to have one, one.
Well, that's a great question, and to be honest with you, um, some of this, again, keep in mind that some of this is, is completely uncharted territory. Because of the fact that, that the state statute changed last year. So when it, in the case of traffic. Uh, speed enforcement cameras. Uh, no one to this point has done, uh, has gone through and done, done these installations. And as I indicated earlier, do we be? You know, do we wait until, let somebody do the lion's share of the work? Uh, or, and let them set the precedence, or do we set precedence ourself and, and, and shoulder, shoulder the burden such as it is? There's also. Um, so, so the question about whether or not. What those, what, what the, the data looks like in, in this, in this regard is. The NACCO city limits was, uh, uh, twenty twenty, I believe. Um, and in this state, we are the first ones, as, as far as I know. We're the first ones in the state to adopt the, the, the discrete set of, um, the speed setting methodology. As our methodology required under state statute. So to answer your question, I don't know what that, um. Study will entail. And one of the things I want to make sure that we don't do from a resource standpoint is that we don't make it a catchall for all these different. Programs, so to speak. Um. You know, a, and, and because it, it could become, and I think I mentioned to you this the other day, uh, Mr. Furtoni, that. We don't want it to become bloatware, you know, in the software world where it's everything in the kitchen sink, and then it never gets done because there's just too many things. And so I think that there's a certain amount of, um. Again. I have to completely defer to the experts on this topic, uh, our friends at John, at John Pascal, at Transpo Group and the chief and, and Jeff Perrigo. About. What their recommendations are that would be included in moving these things forward. And I think we've all agreed. I know we've all agreed. We, we talked about this in a number of times that the low hanging fruit is. The neighborhood streets consideration and. And again, keeping in mind just for the, the edification of the public who may be watching this now or, uh, you know, in our, in our. In the greatest reruns on Netflix of this Lake Forest Park City Council. Um, that binge watching, by the way, which is. Yes, anyway, Netflix is not yet, has not yet picked up the city council meetings. But I think that, um. It's important to recognize that there, that we can't have everything just lumped into, into one big program. And so we're going to have to make these, these, so, take these sort of slower steps and, um. And, and see really, let the data inform us on where we need to go, go next. The thing that I'm looking at. And, and colleagues, please, um. You know, please weigh in here, uh, about this. I think of, I'm thinking in terms of time horizons. Again, with, with the. Highway considerations being the long. Much longer kind of horizon. And then the consideration, uh, you know, going to arterials, because the state has to approve certain things. And we have additional steps we have to take. And, and, and just, just another. It's, um, just one last thought on this topic. Even within. Highways, for example, there are very different things when it comes to, um. Uh, uh, traffic safety cameras. So in the case of one oh four. Uh, we have two different speed limits right now there, and so. We could put a traffic camera near a school under the school zone auspices of the, of the, um. State statute under the RCW that was passed and, uh, that went into effect on July first. But we'd have to change the speed limit. Uh, to have a traffic enforcement camera and do an equity study when it comes to. Traffic camera on farther away. Uh, actually, the equity study would not be required. On Balenger Way, farther away, we'd have to change the speed limit if we were choosing to enforce it in that regard. I think, uh, Vice Chair Casover had her hand up.
Yeah, so Tom, I'm. I'm feeling a little, um. Unclear on. On what the role of council is, I think, in this whole, sorry, in this whole situation. Um, we're constrained by state statute.
Mm-hmm.
We have other, um. Jurisdictions around us that we're going to need to connect with. I'm thinking particularly along the five twenty-two that it makes sense that we work. Hand in glove Kenmore, so I don't know what their kind of timeframe is on thinking this about this project. And. We have a consultant, which I'm not entirely certain what the product is that we're going to get from them and when it's going to come. And I'm not really clear on what the role of the council is versus what your, what your idea is of the role of the council versus. The consultant and our own staff. So could, could you maybe just? Help us with that a little bit because. It almost sounds like you are asking council to do some of this sort of research that we might. Sometimes we ask of a consultant or our own staff. Is, is that what I'm hearing or am I misunderstanding?
No, uh, uh, thank you for the question. It's an excellent one. I, uh, it's actually the o- opposite. I, I'm really thinking more that from a working group standpoint is taking the information that comes from the consultant. And looking how it dovetails with the policy, um, uh, the discussions that we've had over the past. Well, sensibly, it's been about almost ten months or twelve, eleven months. Um, and then, uh, making recommendations based upon that to the council, whether it is we. Um. So we would, the, the transpo group is recommending. X, Y, and Z for, for this. And.
Expecting that, Tom.
I'm sorry.
What, when are we going to hear from the transfer group?
That, that's a good question. Maybe Phil can jump in.
I. I figured I'd let Jeff stay off to the side. So we had.
I didn't know Jeff was there. Hi, Jeff.
Uh, so we had the mail from transpo group that Jeff forwarded to me this afternoon. And we should have their ridge. Basically, we asked them for a, a scope of work, you know, what, what it would take to meet the requirements of NACCO and the state. And a cost estimate, so that we can then review the scope of work and see that if it encompasses everything that we're thinking about. And my thought would be they will go out and do that work and report back to us.
Will that include a timeline?
The timeline.
Or when the work products would be produced?
Their work products?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's going to have deliverables.
Here's what I'm thinking. Um. So what can we get done with this council representation by December? So I'm looking at the fact that we're going to have another election cycle. So it doesn't mean that the work won't continue after. But I do want to focus a little bit. On what our group cohesive and well functioning as it is. Can get done, um, by December. So, uh, recognizing that we don't, you know, meet that much in late December, so. Um, just trying to. Be. And it's fine if the answer is nothing. It's all going to continue further on. But that creates just another potential loop with, uh, potentially new, uh, you know, electives.
Yeah, it's also a process.
Yes.
To change.
So, so that was what my question was going to be is. Uh, looking at where we are right now, February, and we have. Proposals coming in. Um, what, what's the piece that we could get done by December? And then what's the rest of that timeline looking like?
Yeah, and I would assume, although I would expect that there are deliverables in there, we can take a look at that and see how we could then schedule that in. Because I think it's right. It, it's a chicken and egg thing. You, you need the data. Put into policy. So I mean, I think about it with the traffic.
Yeah.
Um, program that the chief and Jeff and, and everybody sit on is that there's a set of measurable criteria against which they look and decide if there's something. Needs to be done in location. So I think this data drives the council setting that policy. Then, then there is a staff group who does that implementation. Obviously. There's going to be back and forths at that point as well of the council, but at least some objective criteria to go out and do the work and. I can't even say what that is today without seeing, you know, what comes out the other end, but I, I kind of see that. I can't even say what that is today without saying, you know, what comes out the other end, but I I kind of see that being that.
I'm just studying the filter, which is, is there a component? Making by the council that would occur by early December? And the answer might be no, I'm just trying to drive if there's an opportunity. I'm trying to drive something by early December if there is a piece that's possible.
I see Larry. Oh, sorry, Jeff.
I should say yes, Larry.
Oh, yeah, I I got I got it. I can see his left hand. Thanks, Mayor.
Something off on this. I think if we were to not get anything accomplished by December, I would be very disappointed. Um, what I think with with the transport group, I think there are several independent work products. So one, I think the easiest work product is going to be a survey of our neighborhood streets. Are they low, medium, high level of traffic density conflict? I would hope they could get that to us within a few months. And then the council could immediately start working on what do we want to change, if anything, about our neighborhood speed limits. In the meantime, they're working on piece two, which is the equity analysis for traffic cameras. Once they get that done, and maybe that's by the end of the year, maybe it's not, because it's somewhat uncharted. Then the council can be or a working group can be working on where we want to put new traffic cameras for them by Horizon Park. And then kind of their third work product would be. The actual formal speed studies that are needed for our arterials and state highways, and that's going to be longer term. But I think if we can decouple these and say, you know, get us the neighborhood speeds study, you know, get us that low level information first. We could immediately as a council or a working group. Get on that. You don't have to wait for the full total report. So I I I would like to see that we're broken down that way so we can get started as quick as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, uh, Councilmember Riddle.
Thinking very similarly, I think, I think council, I think councils first for a, and this will be reviewing their scope of work that they provide to you. That we've asked for. And that will hopefully align with something similar to um, what Larry is talking about is like the. The the distinct work products and it being multiple work products. And if it's not, then that's our chance as council to say, hey, can you break this down so we can have. These chunks of of work at different times. And I think that's the point we put together the work as Larry said. I think that's a very. Smart way of approaching this problem, knowing that we don't know. Anything right now. We hinge it on when we get work from transport. And then we move forward and start creating the work group and hopefully getting work products.
I I thank you, Councilmember Riddle. I and Larry, I I really appreciate your comments, uh, as well as Councilmember Bodys. I mean, these are all really insightful thoughts. I, from my standpoint. I don't have uh, um, I. I have no illusions that we're talking about impl- implementation in this year. I'm thinking more on the policymaking side to see what we can do to assist in getting things moving forward on the policy side. And the question about a working group or working groups um, is is less about. Implementation and more about trying to digest some things and keep keep things moving from the policy side. And and being, you know, completely respectful of, you know. Uh, uh, the implementation side is going to take considerable amount of time, resources. Uh, and in the case of things like, we might need, you know, approvals may take. Considerable amount of time from Washdod on a couple of these fronts. And so I appreciate what you said, uh, Councilmember Goldman about sort of these. You know, um. Horizons that that, using my word. That I that I I think that I think that that is the approach. And again, we do not know. I mean, transport group is going to come to us and say, here's what we think you can do. And we can take a look at it as as a as as a group and and based upon the recommendations from the administration and then. Um, and and see where it fits. I think um, part of it is. Again, there there are things that are gonna take a much longer period of time. But if i- if as policymakers, we can do as much work as we can that's in our. Wheelhouse, however, that whatever the correct uh, words are. Then um, and to keep things moving forward. And also being very considerate of the fact that. Right now, we only have resources allocated for the studies, I mean, for and and a very discreet set of money there. And implementation is going to require additional policymaking and and decisions about budgeting when it comes to actual implementation of some of these things. Because they don't happen in a vacuum and and staffing and and um. Signs and all sorts of things that have to be considered, so. Um, Mr. Lebo.
So, Deputy Mayor, from my understanding, when you say working group, are you speaking of like a transportation committee? Lake Forest Park did have a transportation committee. And that was group of citizens. And so is the intent, when you describe working group, to have a group of citizens who have an interest in this. To do as we have for other. Commissions or committees that we had in the past make recommendations based upon review of materials such as studies from transport. Or are you thinking of council? Uh, of the seven members that we divide up into groups, I would. My preference would be to have a citizen's group do this. Uh, who have a lot of interest in it. Uh, but if it's by council, I would always lean to make it as simple as possible. So if given a choice between one, one group and two groups. One is less than two.
Uh, thank you for the remedial math, John. I appreciate that.
It's about my level of math on TV.
With, um, sorry, sometimes hard to hear if somebody else is speaking. I don't want to speak over anybody. Okay, uh, so thank you for that, John. I I I I'll be clear. I I had no. Um, intention of considering right at this moment a citizens group. I do believe that from a public engagement standpoint, going forward after certain kinds of things are in place. There there's there's definitely the potential for that. I don't think that it necessarily rises. And I I was very careful about the um, the using the word working group rather than a. I don't know. I I don't want us to have layers of bureaucracy, if you will, you know, that that it becomes another committee. Of policymakers moving things through that that were were too small. Of a of a community and as uh, and and limited in resources to to add those layers, which I think can can end up. Slowing the process down. So having said that, I certainly would consider, uh, I think we all would. On a public engagement side, uh, how figuring out what that looks like. And if it involves a small advisory group, I don't think it rises to the level of a reconstituting the commission, for example. Um, and. But, you know, uh, not touching a nerve here, but it is very difficult to find people for these groups right now. And and so it can be very, can be very challenging. It doesn't mean that we can't. But I don't want to overly burden the administration with trying to help recruit for these things as well. But if the group. Uh, if we all as as friends and neighbors say. You know, after we get some this information and it looks like we need to get additional community endpoint, the input on a. On a little bit more formal basis, then certainly we could consider forming a a, you know, a um. An ad hoc type, not ad hoc, whatever the 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 type of group is that comes in, does something, a discrete tax task, and then sunsets after a period of time. That that's a consideration. I do believe that we're gonna have to have open houses, um, you know, uh. Lots of surveys, lots of things there to to uh, to inform our decision making as policymakers. Councilmember Bodie.
Yeah, to that point, Deputy Mayor, I think that both the planning commission and the climate action committee. Have made really good use of of community surveys. You get a lot of representation and a lot more views. And I'm sure we're gonna get views on both sides of this issue. Uh, so I think better to um, than just having, you know. Sticky dog or um, even town hall meetings to actually give people the opportunity. To answer some key questions and surveys. That is both very efficient of our time and other people's time. And gives us a wide uh, perspective. And and, you know, we do ask if people live in LFP or not, right? So that's always useful to see who's commenting and and where they live. Um, but uh, I I actually think that that we should think about that fairly early. Uh, if we have this uh, council member work group, small work group. Um, figuring out what our questions are, uh, especially because we'll have the scope of work from transport. And figuring out what we want, what we want to ask our community about. That would be um, that would be great. I'm sure not everybody wants more traffic.
Sure.
So it's good for the community, but it's like medicine, you know, it's not everyone wildly enthusiastic.
I I appreciate what you said, Councilmember Bodie. I think, you know. A- and and this brings up a really excellent point. I'm trying to figure out with you folks. What is the, what is the real sweet spot here relative to consultants and and maximizing the value there so we don't spend a lot of money? You know, that we don't need to. So to your point about, okay, so what are the questions look like? Is transpo group necessarily going to be the the right people? Are they the right people to? Write the, write those questions or 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 kind of tee up the engagement or should it come from? You know, they can certainly make suggestions. They have a lot of experience in that, but I I leave it to you folks about what's your thoughts about that kind of engagement too. Because. You know, if we do multiple open houses that are, for example, that are designed or whatever the vehicle is, I'm just using that very generically. Uh, no pun intended, vehicle wise, but whatever the methodology is for for engagement. Um, probably a broad spectrum of things. Um, it can get very expensive very quickly. We've seen that in other places. And so that's part of, was part of my thinking about.
Uh, I I mean, I think we, the council and the staff could put together a series of questions. And then part of what is very informative is the comment boxes, because you get more jumping off from the questions in those comment boxes. And then having a good synthesis is good. So I mean, it could be, uh, you know. What what do you think about, you know, lowering the speed limit on uh, five twenty-two to thirty-five miles an hour or? And then the second question, what about if it's thirty miles per hour, you know, that kind of thing? Um, uh, you could do something similar for the arterials. Um, you could ask a question about people's experience, you know, in the con- you could say, please fill out any comments about close calls. You have had with speeding vehicles or something like that. So I I actually think it's not. I don't think the either the climate action committee or the planning commission did. Uh, you know, they didn't do forty questions. They did a short list within comment boxes, allowing people to jump off into. Uh, additional, you know, consideration, so.
On point, we did thirty-nine.
I can answer that too, but somehow I missed that there were thirty-nine. I think the planning commission had more like twenty on maybe years. So uh, anyway, thirty-nine is a lot.
Vice Chair Cassiver, you had your head up.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
You know, I have two thoughts on this. Number one, not everybody probably knows this, but but I actually used to own a public community researcher. Uh, I've written hundreds of questionnaires and would be very happy to help write one. Uh, so number one. Actually, you do need somebody who knows what they're doing to write a question. And number two, I actually know that. So I think we can do one ourselves. Um. And actually, this is the sort of uh, collection of information that lends itself quite nicely to to survey. So I I agree with Councilmember Bodie on this because. You can have a question that actually poses different speed limits, you know, thirty, thirty-five, you know, I'm just, you know, going through that. And also, um. I think too, we could ask about the sort of physical, uh, you know, traffic calming uh, strategies. What in Britain they call sleeping policemen. I'm sorry. Isn't that funny? Um, and um. You know, the bump outs and all those kind of things too. So so I actually think that a survey would be pretty good. And I think it's the sort of survey if we really get out there and let people know that it's there, that a lot of people would want to answer. I don't think it, you know, there's a lot of surveys that people try to push out there that people are interested in answering them, but I think this is one that people will be interested.
Could I just add the synthesis of that survey is also a helpful tool for community engagement? Because you get to say to the community, the city gets to publicize, here's what you and your neighbors have have told us. So it gives you like a second bite at the apple that way with the synthesis.
Uh, Councilor Riddle.
Um, I might be thinking, but um, we talked about the, you know, the the pedestrian streets. So I think this is a great opportunity to introduce that concept to the community because it's another street safety item, which I think is essentially what we're talking about. Is safety around mobility in our city. I mean, that's why we're discussing. Traffic calming, that's why we're discussing speed limits. So I would think this is a great opportunity for us to lead that program. Uh, kind of out there and start seeing how the community is gonna respond to it and see if they have preferred streets that they'd be interested in. Obviously, we have to do our own research before we implement anything, but.
Tom, I'm gonna call on Larry and let you guys know you have about two minutes.
Oh, thanks, Mayor.
I wasn't actually thinking that, but I agree. Um, I'm I'm gonna also echo, I think we should try to do the survey in-house. Because local experience that we know these roads, we walk, we like, we drive on them. A consultant might have knowledge of making surveys, but they don't necessarily have the local knowledge of what is Ballenger Way like. So I I think that, you know, that's an argument for us, kind of, you know, getting the pulse of the community.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Goldman. And and by the way, I I don't know, there, some of you might have received this email. We got it late in the afternoon from a member of the community. About, uh, Seattle is actually doing painted, uh, some painted crosswalks now, mural types of crosswalks, which is interesting. We, I think, I think it was either Vice Chair Cassiver or Councilmember Riddle that originally, yeah, I think, yeah. And it's it's pretty, pretty interesting. Uh, I mean, that that it's starting, those kinds of things are starting to get adopted. But I really love the discussion about this community engagement and the survey and and maybe. Maybe that's the place where it starts as a small working group puts together, you know, uh, you know, I I. Not not to speak out of turn here, but I I think Vice Chair Cassiver should definitely be a lead on that one in terms of the survey. Since she has the most expertise. And I do appreciate what you say, Larry, about the, very much so, about the local flavor. Because it's one thing to come out and take a look at something or or get data. It's another thing to walk the streets and 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 to hear from your neighbors and your friends and what's going on, so. Um. Mr. Lebo, I want to be sensitive to, uh, maybe last thought, and I want to be sensitive about our time, the mayor.
I hope on the survey, we can ask for a box for volunteers or for friends that would like to participate. Because I, you know, when you walk around the community and talk to folks, we've talked to several civil engineers. Who would have an interest because they worked on these kinds of things in other locations. And then there is the um, the mom who's got the children playing out in the street who has particular interest in it. So I don't see if we get a citizen's ear, it needs to be balanced.
Yeah.
Best engineers, but people whose children are playing in the street where they've had their own experiences growing up.
Always great to have, uh, would you be willing to be contacted and more at the end of this? It was great.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, everybody, for a great discussion. I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your indulgence.
Um, real quick, just one second. You'd be amazed how many people by eight, how many customers by eight AM told me what they thought of our cameras. They they find it really great time to tell the mayor. The speed cameras, the people from Boston can really don't like the ones out here.
I'm pretty sure they're not concerned, of course, round and support.
My philosophy, I make the cars run so good, they speed right through.